...in order. All members of the rest of this evening except for Mr. Pannies. That's the table. A lot of people here I know from the public hearings and just want to explain our procedure this evening. We will have our first item on the agenda is Larson Farms on Lane. We'll take that. I know Google label to the first public hearing at 7:30 PM. So we'll load through the presentation on that specific article, explain what the proposal is. Then if anybody has comments or want to get up from the planning board, we have two lights on either file. So if you want to speak, please line up on either of the lights and I'll hold order. We get out the house, state your name and address. First item on the agenda is Larson Farms on Lane.
We've been chasing a couple of those cases. Do I have to drive on Lane?
I think you're right. You guys just speak into the mic.
Do I have to drive on Lane versus the cul-de-sac? That probably won't go as well as I would keep one. But the ground that she was like, we were.
So Pete Silver indicated that on Lane for the purposes of acceptance of a street, it need a top coat of asphalt in either a big cul-de-sac with four inches type of line by two minutes concrete where a weed controlled type of fabric place that we call the sack with landscape stone as three quarters inch on top. This is the thing we don't know.
We'll find out. If you have to place it, please. And I wish you being the summary of the basic of the program.
So that regarding the charges would be weed control fabric with landscape stone. What is the fourth feeling is that this? Anyone wants to speak on that?
Okay, you got a different one. Is he about? You guys talking now?
Question was you got in the curving on the street. Either curving or Kate Carter.
It's Kate Carter.
And so this is going to finish off that aisle in the middle.
But when the plane calls all those planes, they didn't like the plane because the law go by, you're not going to go around. It's not. That was just, I just want to represent and you create a retired fish.
The other item we have is post light or instead of a street light on the road. We can have emails from three property owners that live their street lots on the on this cul-de-sac and all of them are requesting a driveway post light instead of a street light on the road. So there are three emails. I don't remember his last name, Bob. Tony Bradis and and Arthur. I don't have people's last names. So we have three separate emails. So that's the cul-de-sac. We have a lot of years there. So what supports? We all okay with streetlights. So with the post lights, a street light?
That's not for me, David.
I'll take a moment. Sorry, thank you.
We have a problem with streetlights. Going to make sure that's whatever you guys pick. You know, not be private now is saying that they're not going to replace all those along that preserve that tag. So I watch what you guys pick. I make sure everything electric, you know, pretty good and effective and that's electric.
In this case, they're requesting you replace the street lights with the post lights at the end of the driveway. And I believe that homeowners responsible for those.
I just wanted to enter in the street place. Like when it's only few, they're like, they're a street hop. I just didn't hear them. I just wanted to enter and I'm not going to get caught.
Okay, thank you.
I'm actually trying to take it off the house. Back in the day, we were like three thousand dollars.
Have you kind of lost something in the motion to the effect? I think the motion is so much for you. So the motion is to allow driving post lights in the properties and street lights on the road. Post lights to be maintained by the homeowners. A motion to that effect? And then the second, second. Mr. Durant. I'll take a moment. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also focus. Okay, I think we have an initial issue with the drainage.
Question regarding this group, the modification of 2007 shows shows catch traces at the entrance way to the yard. And it didn't appear for those who constructed it, you just want to.
I believe that I worked in office. First I heard this, but I believe there are two catch traces to be made from the existing. They were on the existing road. So there's no drainage on our, on our plan.
Can you just take a look at this again? These two here.
I believe in that.
Don't check when I do like.
They're all getting to the other. This is my. This is the two. Thank you.
Okay, so on that, is there any agenda for the seats? 7:24. Fortunately, we wait until 7:30 to start public hearing. So we would take our bills and warrants for station. So bills and warrants, you have $7,020.77. That is payroll for two week. They'll give you B N C company supplies, some type of qualification. Zoning changes. And with the membership of Massachusetts, I just for our. Motion is accepted through. I'll take a moment. Mr. Durant? Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty? I will also focus. We'll take any updates on the order. We'll have to choose the number of order up this time.
There's a question regarding status of the name there. A segment which was recently approved by the planning board in our D E is there was a complaint from the developer. As far as the court itself storage. Sending the board's email recently indicating from this device that an engineer that journey will be contacting me to file the device to come as you asked that for.
At this time, the self storage is not occupied. Do you have an update on the solar installation on Hill Street by the way?
From what I understand, we're working through some of this neighbors complex at work. And we resolve these issues and manage them for the standard construction. The chairman asking for an update on the top street solar project, which is a weed development. That it is under construction. Landscaping is early complete. They took a side clearing, no mission, and they moved forward that waiting confirmation. So they completed so they can start construction in the actual field.
Wait for a few articles to come. They said we are in quarters and waiting till the post time to start public hearing. So it's probably a few minutes.
While you may be quite interested in something, one of the articles that we on town meeting are the Shawn Meyer dialogue. And if anyone knows the contractors or anybody be interested, there's going to be a presentation about segmentation and erosion controls. It's going to be put on Mondays, 7/26 at the library from 3:30 to 4:30. And so this will address the new requirements of the federal government and the N S four. And also a little bit about my life, or something that's interesting.
We'll be 7:30 over the public hearing for Article 12. So in section 12.2B and 12.4. While we run through the run through the changes. So I'll read the, I'll read the article there. Now, this is a housekeeping article to require procedures in accordance with the general laws Massachusetts, chapter 48, section five, and that's the zoning law of the state. So Article 16 on the seat of town vote to amend them. For zoning by law is Article 12 by making the following provisions. The text to be deleted shall involve striking the text and language to be inserted shall involve a normal text. And that's on the, on the screen behind us. So the procedures for a whole public hearing zoning says, so the planning board shall hold a public hearing literally advertised as required by general laws, chapter 48, section five, and any proposed amendment referred to. Five awards left and within, we might change 60 to 65 days of such referral. And notice of such hearing shall be completed according to the requirements of general laws, chapter 48, section five. General notice we serve for proposed amendments that universal avoid application to the town. And we want to eliminate mail to all property owners according to latest tax charter, including within or abiding land subject to amendment, abiding communities under regional planning and consuming. The reason why I changed this is to bring us to the general requirements of chapter 48, section five. Anyone has questions about this, we can answer that later. And we also want to change section 12.4, which says whenever the amendment to the zoning act proposes that the zoning classification of a parcel of land be changed, the initiation of such amendment at least three weeks prior to public hearing shall submit to the planning director an accurate amount of identified extent of proposed change. Then why can we move that after brought by a registered land surveyor, that's the owner's requirement in many cases? And then also that we shall post a boundary of some land included in such amendment with signs that was two feet square and finally proposed change to the date time and place of public hearing thereon. And again, we also need all of those signs also for the owner's requirement. Feelings that would be notified before these now with other means, a newspaper or online. So that's our. Supposed to propose changes to this article. Any nervous of the planning board having questions or comments? Any nervous of the public hearing questions or comments? Can you start this line up at the lights? This is back in the north, the plus attend $700 to produce all the signs to for posting land for this hearing there. So this is the back of our car in the contest. I'll start left first and then the other two. Sorry, can you say your name?
James Hold.
Your name is?
54 Lemon Street.
Okay, please speak into the microphone.
James Hold, 54 Lemon Street. My property is to the corner.
No help with the post.
Not so fast.
Okay.
All right.
So.
And I have an opinion. I don't know truly how I may ever should to this form. But I've heard a lot of other people in town, this is worth noting. Don't get wrong here. Not my thing is right. Of all sorts of changes and polls that kind of come up last week and maybe cancel that those kind of odds. No. We must have, should there have been Thursday evening?
There was a lightning meeting the week before that on Thursday to discuss the issue. And as far as notifying property owners and after notify the older properties according to Mass General Law. Anybody that's a letter?
Yeah.
It's not required to be noticed. The requirement for Mass General.
Oh, yeah, we are trying to pick up that in future that we.
No, there's no requirement now to notify a butter since the wrong thing.
Can I ask one quick question about, 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 um, what was on general, general law? Motification on the trees? They saying that we're going to do a way we got to be two pages.
So there's no requirement to mail notice to a butter?
Yeah.
Right now, we are town hall, not Mass General Law. Town hall, we require three weeks prior to the public hearing that we post every property with a two foot, a two foot sign showing detailed post hearing.
And I'm right, am I right to think that you want to eliminate that? We have, we're going to continue to do that.
With us, with community.
Okay, so with, with, with planning on eliminating posting the properties that is known to be spoken. And I would take it in my phone because I don't have a copy of it. We're going to actually speak of holding trial, correct tonight? This is what we're speaking of?
Eight o'clock.
Okay, and at eight o'clock. It was supposed to, that it's going to be industrial, not commercial slash industrial, correct? Correct? I think I think, is it, does it have any, do you have any intention of it being commercial slash industrial?
Well, the use of that can be in industrial zone or also commercial.
All right, so Tom Man is actually posted on that, I think. That said, commercial slash industrial, right? And I spoke with you and you told me that it was absolutely just being termed like the science says, the industrial.
So I.
And it would only be warehouses and manufacturing. And it was commercials, we had all of something else. Only talk for tonight on something that's slash, right?
The change itself is actually proposed for industrial, however, in the industrial zone, commercially it's intended.
All right, but you told me as a member of the planning board.
I don't remember.
Okay, well, when I came to the level of you were the one that spoke.
Yes.
And that there was no intention of commercial, it's just mainly industrial. And I don't, I don't care for either of it anyway.
So we're, we're going to take up the issue later on. This, this for right now, from hearing.
Because I, I, I want to make amendment if I can, if I can take completely off because we've been misled of the if we're going to talk about the actual commercial, it should be on that map as far as I'm concerned. And I'm not loyal, but I can.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about the whole department zone later on tonight. Right now, we want to focus on this one article.
Yeah.
Initially, this is about.
Taking off the trees. Taking the nose.
The notification.
Yeah, so people are going to be new things. Right, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
So Mass General Law requires me to, or planning directors to notify the public through two consecutive advertisements in the newspaper as well as posting it in visible ways in town hall, which has been posted and being noticed for for over a month now, maybe, I also generally just make sure people are aware. It requires us to notify the property owners, which I did to the Mass General Law. There's no requirement to notify others. The way that I know is to look at the line, place it. Look in the municipal building or home, you know, to check out the information if you want to come to. But I have a thing to the newsroom. Those are the requirements are necessary for a lot of them.
Mrs. Silver, I'm sure seeing the ones in my report, I came up to ask you to elaborate on the general notice with me. And also to ask if the accurate map submitted to the director were being posted in some way. And I'm asking because I'm a former member of the board. I'm interested in this stuff, so I checked every element, any of that going down there because it's on top. So I'm a little concerned that it's being completed. I understand why they're posting signs. But I think another alternative that we need speaking with Rockville, I'll again, we're going to play it on the list in the newspaper. Or posting town.
I also, this is great. That's a 23rd of West Street. I also believe there should be better notification. I'll read it now. You know, it says right up to me right up there, it says on the property orders, these past records that all she mailed with it for abiding land subject to amendment, abiding communities. I never received any notification. By the only way I found out was actually through, back in July, it's through an email I received from somebody bought a ride or not for me, not the best friends with the street. It came back to me and says, you're not going to like the process. I have to see that there. I'll read the rest of that. But yeah, I think notification, you should be emailing the others. From your reselling bylaws, the definition of terms, you're missing any connect to classify as whether a butter actually is. There is no definition of the terms. Finding what the butter is. How residents on Reservoir Street, if you're ending up rezoning all these layers, nobody should receive anything. Very few people saw those maps. I have to go up and down Reservoir Street and talk to every single labor on all of Reservoir Street and put flyers in their bell boxes to let people know how you see the concept of all. A lot of people are not going to stop and once or even current and read these signs. Actually, you're putting in an email, even in this less notification over there. Sorry, not everybody gets the newspaper.
I just want to echo what he said. I consider myself relatively progressive and I haven't had a newspaper subscription in many, many years. A new resident of town, I am a current and haven't been in town hall. So I have no way of knowing other than a mail up. And I would expect and hope that we could meet the requirements of chapter 48 and in addition, mail to all others. And save ourselves the majority of that $700 by not posting signs. I don't think the signs are applicable, urgent or informative, but certainly mail ups to others would be.
I'm Marty Tropicki. I live at 23 East Main Street from the 59th. I'm president of the Kinsbury Home Association. I understand what you're saying about the mass general laws. But if this is the current standard of town by law, we're required to go by this and notify the others of the zoning states that are coming as opposed to the national laws. Because local laws, I, by laws, I understand supersedes the national laws. One, second, it does not have a newspaper. So you know the topic is it, I don't know, some article. And as people say, many people get, I get the bus to go, that's the newspaper I read. So I didn't see this. We are a butter property that is being rezoned on Leonard Street. And we see no notice. I have drive down Leonard Street a lot, so I saw no signs. Thank goodness, a resident in the area chose to notify all the abiders of that area. So I would say that this is taking local needs and tractioning them just to say we have to apply the national laws.
My name is Warren Seifel, 28 High Road, in Central Village. I think of course, it's been said, I think it's kind of outrageous for the town to try to take this kind of action. Certainly when somebody else is seeking to rezone, the town has an example to exhibit for any voters. Here the town is taking a handful of these residential, maybe in the case of Leonard Street property pushing it to industrial and they don't look to see the need to notify the owner, the people involved or the others. It's kind of outrageous. We take into consideration the fact that if I were one of the areas, which is something fun, I would have to go to all the others. Same thing. It's an industrial zone and not want to give those people notice to be on very.
So what I'm hearing is that comments are such that what I'm hearing is he's one of the firm to have a written notification to the owner of the solar zoning waters. Because.
Certified.
Certified. I've been certified now, but it's possible. We're in town. We're all in town. We're all in town.
It would cost us all $6 to certify butter and.
It's all local now. We're all the ones.
Certified about $6.
I'm getting seven hundred.
At the top of the staircase, it's about a budget of $500.
Um, Michelle Fitzgerald, that'd be on the line straight, just off the property. Uh, yes, I have this. But I'd like to say somebody mentioned how you can ask the people that want to rezonate the property to pay for it. That way it can fall in the loss if they are in the action at the time to rezonate, then they can pay for it. That's part of it, if that makes sense.
That question says, is under great law recommended cases that rezoning can function with town itself or something? Or really more of a complication, so it will come out of the.
Yeah, you want that.
What would be the difference to the call of concern and posting them in comparison to sending certified mail out to?
You know, you want to send themselves to. Uh, a hundred thousand dollars.
I don't know. I have to, I have to have pay for myself to send information about the tree. My property on Leonard Street so that I can set them up and I own 30 acres. So I have to pay for that myself. I just, I just think as long as I never receive any notification, just off property label. And if a family was up for this on, and for his history, so it's just a policy. I just, as long as I never receive any notification, just off property, and if a family was up for this on, uh, certified history, so it's just a policy.
I just like the mall, just going first. And I don't know if anybody really truly knows where fifty-four Linden Street is, but I am in the corner. I'm at the corner, they come completely three quarters around me. I had tax surgery, I was at my house for two months. You know, like a nine-year-old able to walk. And I walked up, saw the sign, he's like, just, just-- So, notification, if that sign was a check, that's wrong, that is wrong. And anyway, I apologize for my, but that's where I, I am in the corner, but that is made, so I apologize, but it's wrong.
Okay, um, if anyone else has questions, comments, or is any kind of a landmark, say. Um, we continue this hearing, get additional, you know, laws and things of that sort. We, the latest process works, the plan of vote, the recommend, the not recommend, town meetings, that will come up as an article, a town meeting vote. So, nothing is being decided here, other than the recommend is a town meeting, and the votes on the article will take in a town meeting. The town meeting is October seventeenth. Speak a little closer to my--
All right, can I say-- Um, if I may-- Do you work in town? Do you define what a butter, or providing communities, or finding, in a high form?
Providing communities are a community that touches the town, so there's five providing communities in order. And byers is not in clear definition, it depends on what you're advertising and what--
So that's immediate?
No, that's not immediate.
Okay, who defines what a butter should, depending what, your community?
The, uh, the final answer to find a butter, it would be, uh, direct a butter would be someone touches the property. Uh, there are other requirements for special permit areas are provided within a certain distance, so that would be defined if the byers--
Did you notify others by hand, with all these, any of them?
No, it's by interpretation of the bylaw, but that was not required.
That bylaw--
That was correct, sir.
So, did you notify any of the byers by mail, according to that bylaw? Uh, do you use the share link?
Yes.
On the menu?
Correct.
So, a direct violation of article twelve-two B, that's a curve, right in front of you. Correct.
You don't, you don't--
You're not a turban. You're not a turban, then the direct violation will also be a third party.
Correct.
You're a little bit, that, no violation will also be a third party.
Anybody who's taken in, that he can forgive me, and I interpret that, that I did not shoot a motor byers. No, I, any court, you should talk to me, if you're not saying that, I'd be happy to discuss with you.
Well, I'm glad, I'm having a good night, just very, very speaking, and we're here with the town together. I'm not looking at you asking, I'm not looking at time call, but I think we're all made together, learning. I'm, the community's getting, there's a couple lawyers floating around somewhere, and I consider, if I'm helping fight, that helps us all to solve problems. I kind of do not go forward with this very problem, as I'm pretty all made agree with that. No, I mean, the other thing, some of the things we've got to know, and if I go forward with this very problem, that's on the sentence. Two, four, six, eight. So I'm going to ask the opinion board to discuss that a violation of article twelve-two B, you shouldn't go forward.
Do I have a question? In my history, that's by the posted, I did find, and it is from a meeting, dated, um, June twenty-third, nineteen sixteen, and it's under a five updated by the street beginning. And there's one question on there, uh, from one person, and it asked me, was, uh, for a run to O'Leary, and then someone says, uh, you're not clear, you're just heading to me, and please, and I'll reach out and make it formal.
So then, I foresee this grounds an honorable hearing. Once and secondly, you're not going to continue this till April of October 11th. That's five days before the town meeting.
This hearing is specifically on changing the requirement. That's specifically the series. This is why I don't understand the other issues. But this hearing, procedurally, is on changing this requirement.
Right, since it's been raised, you didn't, your current bylaws says this. You didn't interpret it the way that the abuders are all in their agreement. So you're having two public hearings after this, in which the abuders were not notified. Does that not make all of those public hearings that are under agenda one? And secondly, if you don't have further discussion of this till October 11th, that's five days before the town meeting, where you want the town to vote on it.
So that's next time before it's to be reviewed.
Well, wouldn't we be more advantageous to continue this discussion tonight? And the public hearings get postponed because you're not notified by the abuders?
Right.
Can I ask one quick question while we're pondering things in the bylaws, right? Who writes up the posters that we put on the streets? Who, alright, so what about the chapters in the bylaws down below that say that this is telling you what we're going to start with later? That about land rezoning and that, we're either playing board, right? That just put the wording on the bottom of that playing board. Massively.
Playing board, also with the jobs.
Okay.
Or about Leonard Street.
Alright, but I'm saying, we either read it with her, but that notice, if we're gonna even talk about commercial, isn't that also, isn't that also?
No.
No, 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 industrial slash commercial shouldn't have been on there?
No, because.
Okay. No, because I was told that they were two totally different things. If it's just industrial, you don't go with commercial.
We will go into what that means of the next hearing specifically on that. So they'll answer that question.
Alright, but I want to just go back, I'm trying to think if I can do it and take it off because it wasn't even much, you know, we wanted to go on properly. If anybody is a boy or a child, you know? Because if we're gonna talk about it, if there's gonna be anything personal, it's three quarters of the ground. Three quarters.
I'd love to show you the issue of our sign. We have two articles posted, watching it before it goes to the long time, to the long meeting. There's no change.
I took up my office in the town for over fifteen years. But people around me, when it's not fire, my wife, my parents, my mom, my uncle, my aunt, he grew up in New York, nineteen ninety-three. I did that for fifteen years, but the other question was people in town, who do you think are the same as you to see bales, baling about themselves to be a changeable? So I want to know, when did you afford to decide to change the word flooding and baling? But as I usually get, so when did that change?
I used to tell them, starting in October. My family area was all seen in town. And the policy doesn't present to me, I was a little old. I didn't interpret it without thought, I don't know that. So if there's any here, has it seen notices in the past? I started to not know, maybe when I was.
Okay, second question I got that was on top of that, is that I walked my day and put on my clothes. And then it's mass gaps, like everyone was on the street moving. So we went to town hall and said, okay, we want to make sure the claim is good. Same time, said, let's cross the street. And they said, residential. So that was two thousand and five. Since then, it's changed to commercial, not any other patients. So whoever people for you, that didn't send a mail. But yet, fifteen years ago, they were, so when did they change that?
Any zoning is changed by town meeting, by a local town meeting? Now, you cannot, it's two times lower than town meeting, so I don't know what specifically that part is, but that's how, that's how town meeting.
This has been an issue I've been chasing since July, the first year of rezoning, the process of rezoning. When I moved there in nineteen ninety-nine.
So, we're gonna have the hearing on, uh?
Well, what I'm saying, what I'm getting to, is when did it change to commercial for town meeting? I spent eight hours, I'm reading every single town meeting from two thousand and fourteen to nineteen ninety-seven. I checked when I moved in in ninety-nine, we call it our four. I have neighbors who moved in in two thousand and six, still says we are four. You go to the testers, Matt, excuse me, currently on your website, it says we are four. When did it change? And why do we never know about it? I mean, if it was never done, then this is all you. The first, it says the properties still are four, it's not.
There were, there were some properties that are presidential, we proposed. And I can deal with that. We split the town, let me come back. Okay, so the second public hearing we had was on Article twenty-two, which is our ground now to the solar tanks installations. And the intent of this was to incorporate weapons requirements into the bylaw. Make sure that when anything was proposed, being through the weapon resource areas, include storm pass, CEP, stormwater standards, including other paths. And then also have the conservation director review and comment on the proposals. So this is a procedural change to add four weapons protections to that bylaw. So, alright. So I just want another one to come back. Just the, if anyone wanted to comment, specific comments in this bylaw?
Is this required, Bill Street?
Uh, this is not specific to a specific project. It's specific to that type of development. Where we could add, you know, requirement, where there's requirements for weapons protections to any kind of upcoming proposal, or solar, solar take upon the board.
My name is David James. I said that the reservoirs actually, as a number of investigations, we do frequently comment on these projects, as I'm sure everybody in this room knows. North fifty-three percent, weapons, so almost everything that I've done in town, needs to be requirements of review by transportation. And to me, this is very reasonable. We do have a lot of input already, but I think it's reasonable to make it more secure.
Any other comments?
I have the actual coverage changes for both the nine and the three.
So this is a case of what this would do, which would bring in the planning requirements and conservation requirements, this is the TIA, that's a port, a non, 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 I don't know, I don't know, so. Any other? Um, here are any other comments on this? Ask the board, if anyone has any comments?
There is.
Alright, I will read out all of them. Okay, so what is changing is that on a site line drawing, we will add weapon resource areas to the requirements for property lines and physical features. Then item H will add a statement that solar projects are subject to Massachusetts E. Stormwater standards, urines are considered a perusal service, and cheap rate of runoff controls. Under section twenty-two, meeting one, we will add that solar installations should not be allowed in the morning for today's weapons, boarding lanes subject to flooding, or riverfront areas, so add riverfront areas. We will add under Article twenty-two, five-two, land clearing, soil erosion, that any land operation considered one acre, shall apply the environmental protection A. These national flood and discharge elimination system, or stormwater destruction activities and require a stormwater pollution prevention plan shall be submitted to the conservation director for review and comment. These conditions to this bylaw, as the papers said, have had, they shall launch protections. Since the new motion, from the last board on this article, or motion we can recommend to town meeting, you can then vote yes or no. Second, motion we second to recommend to town meeting. I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Daley? Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Mr. Biddy?
Yes.
And also, okay. Articles being recommended to town meeting again, this is bill, we're taking on this, this is the recommendation, and then go right to the town meeting in October seventeen. Okay, we now have a public hearing. This is a public hearing set for seven forty-five P.M. This is a public hearing in Article three, zoning map and districts, Mansfield Avenue. Okay, so this article is changing from a commercial zoning district to the village commercial zoning district, an area of land along Eastville Avenue, three and three, containing approximately seventy-seven point five four acres. Also recommended changing from residential forty zoning district, an area of land along Eastville Avenue, containing three point two acres. By changing from the residential sixty zoning district, an area of land along Eastville Avenue, Reservoir Street, or Robinson Lane, containing approximately thirty-nine point five three acres. There's the properties that are recommended for change from commercial zoning district to village commercial zoning district. This is the seventy-seven point five four acres. Everybody can't read this, I'm gonna read it. The status of that nine, parcel two twenty-five, nine, two thirty-five, we have a map to show this is also. Nine, two thirty-seven, nine, two thirty-eight, nine, three oh two. Status of that sixteen, parcel twelve, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-six, eighty-three, eighty-three dash oh one, eighty-four.
Men, men Jim?
Yes.
And Dave, eight twenty-one?
Certainly.
And we recommend postponing the hearing until we have a question answered about notification of the bylaws.
Okay, um, I think we need to continue the hearing, we want to continue the hearing now.
Actually, I move we vote out, move to continue the hearings posted for seven forty-five regarding Article three, zoning map and districts, Mansfield Avenue, at the eight o'clock hearing regarding Article three, zoning map and districts, Leonard Street, Marcus Marcus.
I'm just thinking. Eight twenty-one. Madam Chairman, I don't think you can continue the hearing. We'll have to reschedule.
Can't still hold it.
Right.
I have some wondering, I'm guessing this specific state that is from commercial to village commercial.
Correct.
Of the article two, the oldest state, what it is, it obviously is a separate state, residential two, and it's, he was. It was registered, well, it was registered before you did. To the commercial, that's the state, and then. So I just wanted, before we did anything else, if all people, if all people who posted change, the commercial fact correct?
Point of order, this is a public hearing. And the point of a public hearing is gathering information. And there's concern that everything might not be procedurally, procedurally exactly correct. But does that mean we can't have an open discussion? I mean, maybe, you can clarify this, because there's an implication that, okay, if we're gonna take it off town meeting agenda, I think everybody needs to know that. But if we're gonna have some open discussion, we need to do that as well.
Please, I'm overheard again, and I am more than likely to have to go off town meeting agenda, and everyone that is in the body will receive a notice, and have a public hearing.
This is an issue that goes far beyond the direct of us. This is an issue that has to.
Well, that will be certified by the chairman.
But I remember talking about a major change in the town, and I think it's really an entire town issue, it's not just about the lawyers.
That's right.
So given that this issue will be tabled at town meeting, and at this point, I think we'll need to, take everybody's, or we'll take everybody's terms, as well as the board's left, but this will not be at all town meeting, correct? So the next time it comes off, it'll be for springtime. I just have a quick question, if any, ready to be raised? Um, in the bylaws, you had said about, you know, notifying the abuders, it said in abuding communities. Now, would the abuding community be like Red Mill Village, or the community in Eastwood?
In the spring.
Alvaro, Tom, Tom, as well, the thousands, that would be, I mean, so. If you follow, go back, if you follow what evidence that everyone wants here, to be notified and notified, that's anyone who gets laid in, that touches, but.
Right.
And we see the baling, we will, anyway, we have to clarify this, I understand what I'm saying, but I was just confused about the abiding communities, you know, with the abiding times. So you see, section of the bylaws, it's, you know, inside. Okay. Take one more comment of, like, to be taken off of town meetings, or something.
What I may ask, if you can, if you have that, would it have any more, any more meetings as a county court?
Well, given the term here, I think we can figure out the best way to approach this, and we'll still take all this, all the comments that are advised and developing, and then go forward.
So would you retain the fact of the next community? Or is it always?
I simply said, the next potential time, given.
You did say the main town meeting, and this is a special town meeting. I would say, with all respect, you can't, you would respectfully say the next, and wouldn't. Right.
We will have to talk about how to go forward. I mean, the, the, the public hearing on zoning is taken in an article that is being proposed for the board for town meeting, that's procedurally what happens. However, that's not to say that it cannot be additional discussion, you know, more informal form going forward. But we have to figure out the best way to move forward.
This one is the whole?
Correct. Well, yeah, we want to close it formally, just to put our signatures, but.
But that's what I'm asking, is it closed, or is it pulled, is it withdrawn?
It's withdrawn, it's to be withdrawn from the town meeting. The board, the town meeting.
Correct, withdrawn from town meeting, tonight, being tabled, continued?
We're not, we're not continuing the hearing because it's being withdrawn from the board to town meeting. The issue, I think, is still out there, and we have to find the best way to go forward, to take everybody's comments in, and figure out the best way to go forward. I don't know that right now, I can't answer your question in the next sentence. Well, we'll have to find the best way to know, but we know also. So we have to go back, take all this under advisement, and remain tabled at town meeting, and talk to town council, we'll go with this, and then we'll go forward. You have to speak at the microphone, can't you?
Are you recalling the amendments that you're following the article?
I think the first one. At the, the board, the board is silent.
I mean, it's a, it's a, so you're on this side, okay, I find that this one, does that mean you're also regarding the issue of, I think, the town meeting, which is that we don't have a plan, it's three, the resident, the home.
At this stage, yes, the only thing that we had hearing on, and we'd love to recommend was the solar bylaws. Okay, that's.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, as a developer of this, our second is, we'd like to take the opportunity, if people want to listen, we proposed an informational session, we'd love people to do that while it's here, most of our, once the board is finished, we'll have to review it.
Everyone listen.
So since we have a majority of people this time, or a good amount of people, we made them for presentation, but if you don't want the presentation, this time we're waiting.
I think at this point, we're probably better to wait them to have their act going forward. So that being said, this one will clean up procedurally, the public hearing for Article three, zoning map and districts. I think we want to have a vote table in this article, just up to our list. So my vote, seven, I vote, they're going to vote to table this article, the work.
Mr. Chairman, I move we table the seven forty-five public hearing, Article three, zoning map and districts, Mansfield Avenue, as well as tabling the eight o'clock hearing.
We have a vote to table Article three, zoning map and districts, Eastville Avenue, levels three, Mr. Jersey, Mr. Daley, Mr. Barris, Mr. Biddy, and also, okay, because we have advertised this, I need to procedurally open the public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing for Article three, zoning map and districts, Leonard Street, Hobbs Farm, zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I move we table the eight o'clock public hearing, Article three, zoning map and districts, or Leonard Street, Hobbs Farm.
Second, I'll take a vote, all right? Mr. Jersey, Mr. Daley, Mr. Barris, Mr. Biddy, and also. I want to thank everybody for coming today.